Is anyone registered to speak or wants to speak on anything else this morning if I have not told you that I don't?
Good evening everyone, it's just approach 1A 6 so we'll let it start. I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting with planning board. My name is Sarah Bell on the chair. To my right and to my left down here are councillors and members of the planning board. Further to my left over there are the planning officers and the legal advice for the planning department. On my right is the Assistant Director of Planning and the Privacy Officer is on my left, so that's you seen through. The process that will be followed tonight for each item on the agenda is that the officers for the planning department will introduce the item and explain it. Then we throw it over to the objectors to come forward and speak. If you're a representative group or you're a councillor or member of parliament you get four minutes. The councillors get five minutes and other individuals get two minutes. So we throw it over to the objectors and then the applicant gets the chance to put the case. And I'm sure the other one gets up to ten minutes. After each person has spoken at each submission there is an opportunity for members of the board to raise questions. After all the submissions have been heard, the board will discuss the application and will come to a decision. In relation to the items of business I have a few individuals listed to speak and I will only call them on those to speak who are not registered in advance. If your name is not Paul and you wish to speak please indicate now at the start of the meeting and your name will be taken. And you will not be allowed to indicate your request to speak once the meeting has started. So on 1A 1C Ancient Drive Abbey Wood I have listed in objection Frank Lerner, Ida Kinsey, councillor and relief house owners. And for the applicant Richard Bung and... How do you say it? Fusio Cruppa, is that how you say it? I may be wrong. Is that right? And for Nathan Way, for 133 North and Way I have councillor Albert McCann. I have Mark Quamaday, Norman, Norman Abus, Keith Jarman, Martin Ajimobi and the applicants. For 1A April Street Plumstead I have Maria Freeman, Deborah O'Royal and Jessica Curry. Pradagio Point, I don't know, that last it all the others who actually gets to have a seat to speak. They send the applicants on the running track first doing the applicant as you see, yeah? Okay. I would like please to point out that when you do make representations, we've got quite a lot of business to get to this evening. Please try to avoid duplication. Comments must be relevant to the application and to planning matters. Anybody in the room is welcome to full record or tweet during the meeting which is a completely open and public meeting. But we hope any disturbances to the proceedings. And I must point out because of complaints in an earlier meeting that members of the planning board do use these tablets and the wrong information that they will need to propose to us on these tablets. So we can all pay attention but yeah. But we are looking at the information on the tablets. So can I apologize perhaps since I don't think there are any ones here? A supplementary agenda has been published in relation to Ancient Drive and April Street. Chair, I'm convinced this has been published online, is available for women and men to publish online. And all the members have been furnished with a large copy as well as the in-flight. Declarations of interest, are there any declarations of interest from members of the board? Oh, sorry councillor.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to declare my interest in item number 11 as a work of test. I will listen to the discussion, I will not take any of it and I would like to abstain from what I did.
I know it's a bit abstract but I have known doing the interesting items, it's our work, we have watched it. And I don't think I would matter but I think I still would be able to check off another item.
You will go next.
Chair, I'm submitted to the London site of April Street and I feel that I might express an opinion about that so sometimes I'll draw a opinion for that.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I also like to tell you that item 11, the application from Tesco has been withdrawn.
Chair, on the list of membership of our bodies my listing is there is a correct section of the pitch or some type of section in the libraries.
That's been updated for future copies. The board does have before two sets of minutes on the march and on the... Thank you for all the reference to the floor, my best support so to the best of our ability I'm going to agree with this previous two meetings. So if we move now to item 5 which is 1A 1C Ancient Drive Abbey Wood can I call on the officer Beth Frankkaster please to talk us through the application? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, good evening members. So the board is requested to carry out a planning vision for 1A 1C Ancient Drive Abbey Wood. Yes, so the board has requested grand planning vision for three departments of the site comprising the residential led mixed use scheme. We have three eight fourteen seventeen stories containing two hundred and seventy two new homes. Perd hospital, flexible commercial space and car parking, some parking and parking area. There is an addendum item, addendum report with this item which I'd like to highlight some corrections in the report. Relating to accessible level numbers, parking spaces, side hall spaces, renomination section with six contributions. There's also a submining to the conditions and to the conditions handled as well. And members advised that we have seen thirteen objections in relation to this application. The sites are the examples. The cottages in the city are the station and Curry contains existing PDSA and the least of veteran practice. And there's a supermarket, a full supermarket to the west of the site. This is where it's based, town of the site and residential, two-star residential as well. And residential flats over site east. The borough boundary reflects the downtown centre, that's Harrenham Way. This is just another aerial view from the site in the south east. Here you can see where the applicant station is in relation to the site. So just to run through some of the pictures and see the site context. This is towards the site but across the ground at Harrenham Way, this is post-application signs. And the view of the east. Sorry, can you please, along Ancient Drive, this is going to be chat and this is a close-up view which is on the site and this is the PDSA building. This is standing within the site, it's looking eastwards towards the Borough boundary. This is an internal existing re-architecture in the site. So these are the properties to the north of the site as you can see and they... The only reservations, those directed towards the site and you can see here there's two windows within these properties. And the face direction was the site and they serve, believe they serve an attic. So moving on to the proposal. This is a ground floor plan, as you can see here this is the proposed pack hospital. And we have flexible commercial space and those are western side. There are fifteen car parking spaces and twenty seven of those would be pretty much spaces for residential. And two car places, two spaces for commercial units and twenty seven for the residential. On the ground floor as well there is four channel houses located in the south of the site. There's also lots of bike floors. This is level one showing the pubicum garden. This area here would be a landscape space which is coming on the interior and show the place best. This is a typical upper floor plan and there are sixty-six percent of the unit is a children aspect. And nine of them are significant aspect in our site. And they're all used in national space standards and eighty-three ten are the only compliant intensive daylight. So this is just highlighting some of the additional reasons basically provided, we've got some chart process. This area here and communal group spaces and this block and also this section as well. And it's finding another section on this block and this block. Also just reprimand I identify where the front rooms are and service hall techs. Moving on to the elevations, this is the elevation from the site. It's seventeen stories, the step onto building. This block, 12 Ancient Drive would be eight stories and this is, sorry, this is fourteen. And just a map elevation showing the three tower brackets inside. This will be the leave from Harrenham Way, the west and just going to the site from the supermarket site. This just identifies how the site relates to the car parking at ground floor, the pubicum and user space above. In terms of the height context, the core strategy does identify the area around applicant station as being suitable, potentially suitable for tall buildings. It is acknowledged however that the application site, just straight up here, is outside that identification. But given the context of the emerging context, particularly along the Betsy side, this will have outline consent for not sixteen stories. And we have recently consented at place to two small stories behind the station. And it is the home areas, the opportunity areas I think to work with the numbers of the plan. And given the context, the height is considered acceptable as location. The next piece size is just going to show you some visualizations that we've seen in this proposal. So this is the, the stamp. This is the proposal there. The areas I'd like to include of the hour on the basis of the group just to give us context. So this is from the Betsy, the west. Post ski, again, we have the consent of Betsy scheme. This is, yeah, just, this is the supermarkets, the size of the distance. And this is from this group staying to the south of the application site. And there is post ski and the scheme inside of our project. This is basically from the southern side which is a shared venture one of those. As can be seen from this image, the site sits behind the improved Betsy scheme. So we've not further impacted the setting of the heritage assets. And just to summarise that the housing is total, we've got two million estate to choose from. Thirty-five percent which will be affordable, so it's seventy-four, twenty-nine and fifty, nineteen affordable rents. And which is in accordance with council policies. So the application is recommended for approval subject to referrals by GLA, completion of the agreement and conditions as set out in the clause.
Sorry, some questions drawing. Any questions? Do the other side, ask them.
Just a couple of questions, please, please. The number thirteen on my free notes, that is to decide the acts of in, sorry, or begin the air, the identity of the authorities. Your argument is because there's a similar agreements on their side of the road, that meant to, that they're off, and it was that decision, the man that was on the road, created that. Took into consideration more.
Yes, of course. And so if I go, I'm sorry, to yeah, then just, yeah, the scheme on the inside, Harrow Lane, the Betsy, so obviously different processes combined. But it does, it will fall apart, context of that area when that is built out. And the area in Greenwich, as I identified, tall buildings is is not fully defined, but it's around the station area, so this is clearly outside of that area. But there are benefits that can be seen in the housing and on that basis.
My second question is around application car parking issue. Is the plan to be car park free because of the possibility to be a station? Is that, is that?
Yes, yeah, I mean, there is some parking on sites, but it is, in terms of residential, it's all English places. There is no standard parking for the developments. And so we would be, the agreement is purely car-free development. We are also looking to extend, for the development to contribute towards extending this, in the area immediately to the north. Because I know there is concerns about parking pressure.
Can I follow that up? So we, so we've got, the plan is to have two hundred and seventy-two buildings. Which, I'm not sure how that applies to people, but still really substantial amount of people. And the argument is that none of those people who are very big and happy to live there will be able to have a car, is that what we're saying? Because my reason for asking that is that if they do, then that would create a lot of additional cars coming into the area.
Well, we can't stop people from any cars, we initially said it difficult, but that's not a place of parking essentially. So yes, we would be restricting areas along the rise of the map from obtaining a car compartment and then extending the car compartment areas with a view, yes, as in quite an area of good transport availability. So encouraging the one.
Council board, first of all, from the council.
Thank you, I've got two questions, I'll take them once in time, that's okay. And the first is in regard to paragraph seven, which was the original design review. And the subject of your report was reported in February twenty seventeen. And getting the tall buildings setting on how acceptable, pressing, future developments in this location. And further down, my reserve two, the response to that moment was to reduce my husband's tall building by two stories. Can you just explain the logic for why we think that reducing by two stories addresses the issues that were reported by the council?
Yes, and, yeah, so it was, it was reduced by two stories while in, I'm not sure, the time. But I think it's, it's worth kind of, perhaps highlight, so there's a, the Abbey Place scheme is twenty-one stories down here, which hasn't been revealed yet, but I think so, just about half of that. The idea is that the development steps down away from the Crosswell Station. So at nineteen stories, you wouldn't really see that setting down, losing much production in height between two, between two sites. So at seventeen, it is definitely not noticeable, twenty-one down to seventeen, so we hope that at seventeen, given the context of Betsy, you just don't think that it is acceptable.
And can you just clarify, follow, can you just clarify the decision regarding flexible, this crosswalk, building needs to be built? Or rather, they still suggest to discussion?
So they have outlined these things, and as far as I know, the others have been, the, the, yes, going on from that. But they are announcing discussions for Betsy, yeah, you can, you body, the public housing zone in that area. So we can't guarantee that it will, it's highly likely that it could be in some form.
Am I, sorry, sorry. The second question is regarding paragraph twelve point six, which is our density. Just want to check that I've got my understanding here, and why you think that this is acceptable actually. So the manner of this is that the London Underground, so like the last year, density is two hundred and sixty meters per hectare, or seven hundred and fifty per hectare. And yet, what we got here, in fact, the density is almost double the recommended maximum. Now, I appreciate that paragraph after that say that you should apply this. To double the recommended density is indeed true, yes. But I'm just wondering, why do you think this is, is this asset, the density is so high?
And the answer, my answer to the figure is it is almost double the London Underground recommended densities. And that's not unusual in itself, there are easy schemes that are exceeding the density levels. And indeed, in the drag from the Harris presence, the roof density is practically to about that. Not with that amount, this is the density that we should be looking to currently. And I think with density, you do have, that reminds me, you have to always sort of have problems that come from that density. So it can be an indicator that there's potential issues in the site. But in terms of what those issues are, that's more, more detail that needs to be reviewed. So for example, if it's creating poor quality correlation, or it's having a significant impact on surrounding residents, if we consider that that over density over developments. But in this case, we clearly have offices that it's, it's not actually affecting those same concerned developments. So what's in high density, is it acceptable?
Council board.
Thank you, Sheriff. And just have two questions here, and then if not needed. For one, one is reiterating what I had said, or not exactly, last minute saying. Have we done, is there a survey that was carried out in terms of measuring the stress level for traffic? Given that we're going to house two hundred and seventy-two dwellings?
In terms of stress of traffic, actually, there shouldn't be, of traffic generated side, because the car parking is wider. And in terms of stressful parking on the surrounding streets. And again, it would be restricting the parking permits when you take a property. It should not increase parking.
Thank you. And so the use of the core strategy is potentially okay with this, but what you're saying is not okay. There hasn't been a building of this height in this area. So that's one, so just want to make sure I recognize that it's potentially okay.
So the core strategy outlines a number of areas in Borough which are potentially suitable for tall buildings. It's not going to say always suitable, this is a sort of, so it's directions on the ground. So always for, for, this is a suitable, is potentially suitable for tall buildings. Which, and I'm going to try, so Abbey Road is one of those areas. But it is, it's fine area on map, and it is, in terms of this site, it's just to the south. So it's directly around the station. So this area that we're looking at, here, is just to the north of the area, so then identify the tall buildings.
Have they considered the need of the local community in that, the dwellings are too sensitive, they are, they need to charter.
Yeah, I think it is, it's not in accordance with the recommended numbers in the policy, which does see fifty percent family housing outside, and that is very difficult to achieve in this balance. It's probably worth noting that a number, that the proportion of the regions are always socially oriented, ten yen, which is a positive. And, yeah, I would say that's probably in, it is a conversation, obviously, when you're in the balance. But probably worth noting, that in general, in the area around this site, there is a lot of planning outside, so it's, 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 you know. But it's a modest amount, take it back.
Are we not being a bit naive to the large proportion of these people finding pockets, especially those families that are not around cars? Considering you might shop in areas of some distance, like these pockets?
Well, I think it's an area for intensification, and is identified as such. So the only way you can contact that from a growth is expected is within high density schemes. It's nice to learn themselves to providing some public parking. So what we can do is restrict permits, is quite a common thing for it does to an apartment density.
So you'll be, you'll be issuing permits for coast number one, the kind of thing for it. Which would draw a very little parking for residents that they have.
That would be subject to consultation at post application.
One last question, London before, what we do we have for that, for that part of Abbey Road, that is not really.
So if you look at paragraph sixteen point ten of the report, it highlights the relevance of the posts for this scheme. And that would be what we're sure in section six, three. So the average for the ones who have three beds was fifty-one percent of market. So as you can see, it's fifty-one percent for three beds. Yes, that's the end. Okay. Any more? I'll start, so we have a council.
Thank you, Sheriff. And you mentioned the one oh six agreement. Can I ask on that, how much of the funds that are received are going to be real estate local area? Because I think from all the proposals, a large number is going to be land, and a large number going to be, have lots of payments. Can't see anything that is specified in there as being real estate local, immediate, since these are done.
So, I mean, most of my contributions, my contributions are that, either for, or, and, so, and I just, like, some of this, and, and, and things such as healthcare, or education, that is the biggest asset town in the main reports, yes, and, across the Borough. That the developer has offered an extra fifty thousand pounds, around three percent, and that's in the update.
Sorry, about fifty thousand? And the silver one, two?
Just clarify in the update for the silver figures, and I think they were combined in the main reports. But the, so, yeah, the man's sale is just like ninety thousand, and Greenwich sale, approximately eight hundred, three thousand.
So about fifty thousand pounds is here in the, amount of this, this, for thirty-three.
So, probably, we would be seeking contributions, and, as well, but that there hasn't been, to manage that here now.
I mean, fifty thousand pounds is over the bar, and it is such a true requirement. So that's the fact that over the bar, that's actually, for the six point six. So if that's all for the board, I'm going to start, can I hold for another one, please? So two minutes, Mr. Lerner. Thank you.
Before I start, two minutes is not enough to say anything worth saying completely. I butcher this because of what you said about duplicate, one hundred percent, so I've done that. Right. I'm going to start first with parking. And to say that the AMI on-site parking will be twenty-eight spaces for the PDSA hospital, two commercial units.
Your right, yes, your right is my opinion.
Shall I start again?
Yes, please.
Right, the AMI on-site parking will be twenty-eight. Is it? Third time, Michael. Right, the AMI on-site parking will be twenty-eight spaces for the PDSA, plus two commercial units, two car park vehicles. Customers in twenty-seven spaces for residents leaving two hundred and forty-five residents without parking space. Unless these twenty-seven places for blue, blue bad holders, in which case there will be no permission for parking for spaces for two hundred and seventy-two residents. We are very much in favor of people making great use of public transport, but it's a grave error of judgment to assume that many residents will abandon their vehicles and switch totally to public transport. The result will be a carousel of pollution, on pro parking, meaning the local streets will reach the intolerable limit. In addition, the apartments will be difficult to sell. And also, I believe if the council disallows parking for residents, they'll probably take this call to be a slot to deal with their life. Right, those are reservations that several of the units may have parked in, are being supplied to let France buy to let. This would certainly not be the interest of the people who would relish the opportunity to purchase an affordable home for their own use. We already have too many buyers left in Abbey Wood, many of which are elderly or elderly parents. Rens in Abbey Wood have been forced out recently due to the Camry Crossroads, essentially extent in the private sector that the indigenous population, many of its families have been in Abbey Wood for many generations, have been forced to move away.
You might want to know, please, thank you.
Yes, what might I say? What is needed is not more private accommodation to save overseas for social housing to meet the needs of local people. And those in age, about as affordable housing means nothing to them. It is interest possession, to the Royal British or business property purpose.
Thank you very much. Uh, question? Uh, sorry, Frank, Sir Lerner, we can ask you questions, we've got questions, sir.
How's it, Martin? You spoke about parking. Could you just clarify what the issues are in that area?
Um, could you just clarify, um, what the issues are in that area? Because the question around, what points in terms of where is the parking in that area?
In that area, parking is already pretty grim because people in the houses on the estate on the Abbey Wood Estate, around the Enchon Drive, um, already have difficulty finding sufficient places to park. Um, and additionally, an additional number of cars, any other cars is going to make it a long form. And they will come, well, it collapsed, the whole system didn't work. It failed more than it's because they stopped cars from going into the car parks that were provided. And in, for example, other cities, like in Paris, for example, one point five parking spaces have to be provided with every block of apartments in the city. Doesn't have, it, the evidence that people, this is not one.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold Kinsey, please.
I'm going to speak down to the others. Yeah. Okay, um, this proposed development, as I had to read it, is four hundred and eighty-eight units per hectare. Whereas the London.
So Kinsey, sorry, we just can't hear you. You can have a start, I want this up in the middle of the process.
The proposed development as a unit, it having an intensity of four eight eight units per hectare. Whereas London plans this, how something should be between seventy and two sixty units per hectare. Although the plan mentions it is not appropriate that these figures should be applied mechanistically, showing a figure of meeting double bands maximum is far too excessive. I want to consider inappropriate, I mean, twenty-eight units of the proposed two hundred and seventy-two complete family units. The London plan, the London plan requires development to have regard to the form, function and structure of an area. This proposal certainly has an answer. There are illusions to propose big development on that area. But part of the account is to be taken off the more immediate area of low level structures of town inside that thistle grove, the Abbey State, the nearby industrial units and the little store. All of it would be overwhelmed by such higher structure dominating the area. It is also known that this development will be outside the designated development area for tall buildings. And certainly not part of this supposed stepped hierarchy from Abbey Wood Station. There are a few places available in local stores and the local GP surgery in Godstow Road is unlikely to be able to cope with the lark in front of new residents. Under the London Housing Plan, any new development has to provide new community facilities. But I see no mention in the proposal of any new local community facilities. Surely this needs to be addressed. The proposal states that most students would have a slight safety aspect. But reality is this would lead to the presence of thistle grove being overlooked.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, and a lot of crazy as a result of, and this is not even being commented upon.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Kinsey?
Um, could you, could you just say where you live in opportunity to, to develop?
I live just across, I live in Godstow.
We did it to.
I live in Godstow Road, which lives near Godstow Road, which is in the other end. So I couldn't be much better.
Anyone else? Thank you, thank you. Captain Cousins.
Thank you. I have a set of five pictures, so I actually took some pictures, whether it's in the showroom or. They're in the showroom. Okay, I have them in front of me because I thought they were going to be shown. Okay, thank you. I don't think that this site is potentially suitable for tall buildings. The pictures that were submitted, but the photos of flooding that's portrayed in section twenty-two. We have this called, it's known as river, um, water, if I'm pronouncing it right, or bodyborn, it depends on how you pronounce it. It's often known as the Clam River, and that flows down. We've had experience with kind of crossroads of increased flooding in the area. If we go to the pictures, the, they, those are various flooding images which have been shown that's been dealt with by residents. Just to be up to date, these are taken from the last venue that we had last week, Tuesday. So they are up to date pictures, it's not from like a year ago. There were also, trying to see that at the top, uh, pictures on that side, Box Road. I'm not seeing it, so there's kind of pictures on Box Road, which is a couple of roads that are in far the government. Uh, those pictures, if you have got them in your files, show the waterline from that same. Show the waterline from the same venue, whereas the drive can have five point and all of the other flats. So these are real issues that residents are currently dealing with. The aqua, um, account has not been taken off the, I'll just speak loud. Aquatic account has not been taken off the, this river which floats on the ground. Do you not hear me?
That's it, yeah.
Aquatic account has not been taken off the river which is diverging and float on the ground in many places. So the culverts have been vanished and water is coming up to the surface and not draining away. I don't think that the area is suitable for more concrete to be quarried in and less places for the water to flow. Water has to flow. If it doesn't flow forward, it's going to flow into properties and residents. The ecology of the area has been changed from breaking into the cost rail waters. We have had many mature trees with roots which bind the ground together removed. Remove those trees, you end up with loose soil and rocky ground, and that is what we're experiencing today. I do notice that the plan makes reference to, um, just moving from those points to carbon dioxide reduction. And it does make you wonder on a nice sunny day like today, why solar power hasn't been considered? It talks about the future of this in Abbey, which is a nation, so it's special science to the future. Since you refer to Bexley, which had nothing to do with drainage, the, this block is actually taller, the proposal is working taller um, than the proposed Bexley development if the Bexley development goes away. In all honesty, Bexley wants to put out properties up, that has nothing to do with here. But that has nothing to do with drainage. Garage has to consider its own specific unique circumstances of what we are definitely experiencing.
I'm sorry, I'm getting frustrated. Can you continue when you have to speak loud? Can I carry on?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just speak loud, I'll just speak loud, I nearly finished them anyway. Um, where was I? I think I was up to the point of the views, um, from the Lesnet, um, from Lesnet Abbey, a scientific, um, place of interest. We also do have both reserve actually, um, in the, across in Bexley side. And those views I think would actually be if the Bexley development went ahead, this block would be taller than, than the Bexley one. There, there's reference about creating work, which on the surface might look good, but according to the twenty eleven census, that area has thirty-one percent, is economically inactive by thirty-one percent, approximately. There is no clarity with respect to the actual jobs that Abbey Wood residents would benefit, um, from. It's almost like banging an employment carrot, where is the real employment? Um, I, um, except the fact that some questions were raised about this too, and I do think that maybe section one of six, that that needs a bit more clarity. And I would just like to add a little bit more about the thistle grove estate. These are residents that's been there for, for decades, and it's, it does not appear as if they're being adequately taken into account. I'll stop here.
Thank you, both of you. Could we just pause that meeting for a couple of minutes while we pass through the, um, the, um, situation? Sure, thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you. Any questions for the house?
Um. Um, you started, um, um, around the flooding. Um, could you just say a little bit more about that plan of the development?
The reference, we'll be checking cross traders, letting houses do something, but we are suffering things like rising dam, which we've never had before, and a number of properties, and also must be a small number, rising dam mold, the rocky gardens, as you see, the poor drainage that's created, um, and cracks, actual cracks in, um, um, people's thoughts. There has been communication on the Facebook page, or maybe SE two, where the people are talking about the fact that their profits of their properties um, could potentially fall down or become uninsurable. People are genuinely worried about the amount of work that we just had. There's noise, you know, it's been five years already, um, starting in, he said, ten or five years with cross river noise and work and rattle and dust and so on, and mud and missed streets, et cetera. So the residents have been patient, and I think, um, even though it's a costly other side perhaps, what you've got to remember is that sound and noise and vibration travels and water, they're not static.
Uh, yes, Captain.
I just wondered, I'm pretty asking you also, has the AMI solstice results for that area? Have there been solstice?
It would be because you have an examination.
No, basically, uh, if you're going to build a large block like that on the marsh, it's, I actually remember, um, the estate was built on marshing. And I was told that if we were to let some solstice just falls down, um, the foundation obviously don't have time here.
What's checked, so social?
We have to find out whether the ground is strong enough to take weight, so that it, it requires probably over five, you know, you know, bringing it on top. But that would have, we have to take broad approach, because it's all the time.
So that would be, that's, um, probably a punishment.
For a reputation. I would have thought test, I mean, doesn't mean there's any application to do that test.
So we, we received, uh, technical instructions of examination, land rounds and all, to the D B S. It is a different condition, I'm going to be seeing further information, so examination, socials, but the, um, is more.
So basically, building control, approaching on, uh, uh, an engineer's ball, a solstice before this application could be brought. So I guess it's not suitable for building now.
Okay, thank you. Now, for the opportunities to speak. Any amount of ten minutes, retrieve. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Can you press up in the middle, please?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Richard Pope, um, I'm a G A, and I'm consulting on the, on the project. Uh, so actually, it's Elise Critar, who's the architect. So what we wanted to do is explain the backgrounds and proposals, um, and to benefit of the scheme. I'll try and press some of the questions that were raised by, um, the directors of Gas, who come in, and were stressed by officers. Uh, and then Elise will explain a bit about the design rationale for the scheme. So in terms of the background, we started working on the project at the end of twenty sixteen. We've had a series of constructive meetings between, uh, drainage officers and G L A. We've also engaged people on a number of occasions to ensure that both of our site, um, complement the work of the temporary regeneration program. We've undertaken public engagement, um, in form of a public exhibition that took place last summer. Uh, one thousand seven hundred and fifty properties were contacted as part of that, um, exercise. Uh, and in autumn twenty eighteen, we also provided an update that's in the same, uh, same residence and businesses in the area. We believe that the positive engagement that we've undertaken has resulted in, uh, officers being able to recommend the application for recruitment, as well as the G L A supporting the scheme. In terms of benefits, um, there are a number of benefits that we believe that the scheme will deliver, and we ought to establish those to be it. The first point is the site is located in the temporary opportunity area. And proposals can contribute positively to the objectives of the area, including the provision of new jobs and homes. Secondly, the scheme will result in redevelopment, a site which is currently not attractive. We believe the replacement proposals have been through a robust design development process which will enhance the area. And the scheme is also supported by the G L A in terms of designing this respect. There's also the opportunity to provide a P D S A at hospital facility. The P D S A is a, is a leading veterinary charity, and it provides low cost and free veterinary care to the signature packs of people in need, as well as promoting responsible pet ownership. The redevelopment of the site will provide the opportunity for a new facility which will ensure the long term future of the charity in this location to continue to serve residents. The P S A has worked alongside architects to ensure that the development, as they're operating. Caters for their operation needs, who also have representatives from the P D S A H N H, who have needs, who have done that. Scheme will also deliver ninety-five beautiful houses, which has a thirty-five percent affordable housing, um, with seventy-one percent social and, and twenty-nine percent intermediate. And if part is obtained also from the G L A, that will increase to forty percent of affordable housing overall, which is equivalent of one hundred and ten year affordable homes. The creation of, um, new jobs through the new commercial unit and the P D S A facility, as well as a section one oh six contribution of two hundred and seventy thousand pounds towards employment and training. As part of the scheme, we will also be, um, will be, site owner will also be handing over a portion of land on the eastern boundary side, which will allow for the. Okay, and there's a portion of land on the eastern boundary side, which the, uh, landlord will be giving, giving or handing over to the TAP council, um, in order to be able to widen, narrow, and improve that, that particular road. Uh, and in addition, there will be fifty thousand pounds towards further public improvements, which was discussed. Uh, and lastly, a hundred, uh, one point two five million pounds in silver payments to be used towards local infrastructure. There were three, um, points that, um, were raised by the directors. There were three points that were raised by the directors and then casters who come in that weren't discussed with, with officers. And I just thought I'd try and explain the scheme proposal in that perspective. With regards to flooding itself, the scheme proposal that the site's currently, for our sadly, and as part of our proposals, we're looking to maximize the amount of green space on the site, including living rooms. And as a result of that, the actual surface water runoff from the site will reduce by more than the third of what it is at the moment. So that should improve in terms of on-site flooding. There is a hole that runs at the front of the site, and that will remain in place. It would be maintained, could be maintained, managed as part of the scheme proposal to keep it thin. So water can flow through. Yeah, one of the points raised was about the ecology on the site. So as part of the proposal, we'll be planting fifty six new trees within the scheme. There currently six trees on site. And there are also a number of ecological measures we're putting back to implement, including green roofs, urban back boxes, and boxes as well. The other point was just about ground conditions on the site. It hasn't been submitted in terms of ground conditions, because it will be dealt with outside of the planning process. However, the applicant has undertaken works to assess the ground conditions on the site. And the scheme design is being developed to ensure that they work with the ground conditions that they're in the moment.
Good evening. So as the architect for the project, there are really four main designs we want to focus on. We're going to be talking about massive composition, then ground design, character of the architecture, and lastly, quality of the accommodation. So first of all, in terms of the massive composition and the height. We have been very much all throughout the design process to create a development which offers a composition of a number of elements, which are each responding to their particular location. As part of our analysis, we have studied the emerging context that we have got. Already looking at the PPD developments across Harman Way. As we know, the heights, the maximum height there is set at fifty seven point seven meters above later. And also looked at what's happening because of the station, and the development of the road, which is seventy two point two meters above later. So our design office, a development which is composed of four different buildings and different elements, variations in height, which are all located around the central courtyard garden. And this composition is ensuring that the overall mass is not monolithic. So yes, we do have a tall building, but it's only one tall center element of it. That particular building, we feel is responding to the emerging context. It's very similar in height to what's happening on the other side of the road. And it's strategically located at the junction of Higginthorpe Drive and Harrowman Way, in a useful portion of the site. Then the massive steps down the way, away from Harman Way towards east, with a fourteen story element, which is adjacent to the little site, and eight story front of building, which is connecting these two relevance. I think it's important to say that it's at fifteen meters away from the edge of the pavement. So it's not located directly onto the road, but it has something around in front of it. And we also have a fourth development, which is a row of three story townhouses, the town of the site. And as we know, this has been tested in a number of kilo firefuses, which have identified that all these relationships with the surrounding complex, these are acceptable. On the second point of the ground design, so we have really carefully thought about what is happening around the building. We have set the buildings and designed the public rail to improve the experience for pedestrians around the site. We need this to say at the moment, it's not a great space. This has been done through a number of solutions, so as I was saying, the buildings back. We have enabled seven buildings away from Harrowman Way to eventually walk the building. Enabled the widening of roads, we might surprise the landscape. We have designed the buildings so that there are also residential entrances all around the site to improve potential surveillance and safety. In terms of the character, very simply, we have used several palette of materials. All the buildings are brick, we're using three handed bricks with consistent detailings throughout. And the stuff that's also facilitating excellent internal layout. And lastly, the quality of the accommodation, the two hundred and seventy two years, all given ten years. They're all set and have access to central immediate spaces, sixteen hundred square meters with overall shared immediate space. Ten percent are designer wheel chain housing, over two thirds of the residential aspect. And lastly, all apartments are private immediate space. Mrs Alguerme's, Paul's, Val's, all its gardens, depending on the conditions of the place.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, first of all. You were talking about water running off. But a lot of the way we read is a podium level, but we don't, isn't it? So can you just explain to me how that works? I know it's a concrete site of.
Well, so we are, we're accumulating the runoff through the use of three roofs, through the use of activation tanks, which will be located. And when the water from the tanks goes where?
It's, well, eventually the water is released. But the purpose of these hydration tanks is when you have a rush of water in a store room, for example, how was that, when it's, so great.
Thank you. The other question I wanted to ask you is, can you talk us through your sunlight and your channeling survey? And we'll talk from the town, please.
Yeah, so we have undertaken some eye on data assessment. Which assess the relationship of the scheme with the surrounding area. The, it's only impacted properties to the north. There were two windows which are landing windows.
Can I just add one question? I'll just go through some of the other ones. If you look at the reason houses here, of the town, you don't.
So those windows have been assessed in terms of combined with sunlight, and they pass the oldie going on. We also assess the properties in terms of overshadowing the city. They are sensitive because they're elevated to the north. And again, those pass the overshadowing test within the B R M.
So I know that they passed the guidance, which is two hours of sunlight on the twenty first of March. But there is a lot of space, and they're making it shallow. Is there some model which shows us to what extent that tall buildings are going to fall back in the most houses that are completely shattered during the day? And I know that they pass the required, I don't know how, but I'm just wondering if there's anything to demonstrate what you have, your view.
We have, we have said that we're going to see this part of the application. I don't have the plan with me. The, you always end up with a portion shadowing, particularly that when the light is at very low levels. And that's, that's. And that can be, that can be. That's right. That can be with buildings or even the source, just because of the angle of the sun. So there will be some element of overshadowing, potentially leaving when the sun's a lot lower. But the distance is quite significant. Around thirty meters, I believe, from where the building is to where residential properties are. And that's a, that's a significant distance in terms of overshadowing, especially.
Hi, good morning, Castle Williams.
Thank you, Chair. You talked about engaging with the people, engaging with the public. I think you mentioned it as contacting all one thousand residents. Are you able to, I noticed that the building is immediately south of the travel site. Have you got any feedback on residents on those sites or feedback on thousands of consultations?
So we invited one thousand seven hundred and fifty, sent out one hundred and seventy thousand letters to the properties, invited to a public consultation. Those went to the residents of this old estate as well. Twenty three people turned up at the, at the event, the public consultation hotel. Not everyone registered at the public consultation, which is, which we tried to get people to do, but you can't always guarantee that. And so there are any, of the people that did register, none of them were from this old estate, that actually registered to attend.
So, sorry, Castle called for first, they're up, they're up there. Castle did a, and they can't sign, and they.
I hope the answer lead to Councilor Dillon. I hope the answer to Castle Dillon about how some places are not for planning board. But it's just that, as somebody, as I've attempted the crossroad consultation meetings for the last five years, and been aware of some of the issues that Castle Cousins raised around the conference, and in fact, the pressure from, from the development of the RV, and where in an area they're passing, they didn't do, try and pass, and there hasn't seen one appear. Are you completely confident, and you can't do that to me about this? So are you completely confident that we've done all the research that we need to do about how can we put in a one point distribution? But it occurs that it's not for you.
Yes, we are. Like I said, the point about the ground conditions, it's just, it's not necessarily a requirement to submit with a planning application. That doesn't mean say that we have another working background, because if it didn't work in terms of ground condition, we wouldn't be looking to submit a planning application for it. And then the developer's. There's some background work to achieve that, because they want to deliver the site as soon as possible. So they can't let you do this work, understand?
Castle Dillon?
You mentioned that we consulted the admin planning applications on Bexley. They only got permission for fifteen stories. Considering the density of your build, I would decide to go to seventeen.
So we've looked at the, there's a story height, and then what we've looked at is the actual height of the building. So what we've, the difference between the buildings are, they're fifty, fifty, so around fifty eight meters. And we are on fifty nine meters in terms of meterage from around. So in terms of stories, there is a two story difference. But in terms of that height, there's a, there's a one meter difference. But we've looked at that from, you know, meter difference from the views from the ground level. And a one meter difference is perceptible in terms of that.
Are you aware of the people in divisions in Bexley?
Is this in relation to reserve matters, mission?
No, no, are you aware of what has been grown for planning by Bexley itself, for those sites?
Yes.
And you know, so far, I haven't grown a vision for thirteen story ones. I spoke to Bexley this morning, this has seven five, maximum height, clearly isn't it, big ground, thirteen?
And we've looked at, we've looked at all of the planning information online and all of the approved documents.
Yeah, and the online, that's all made from.
Yeah. And we've had a look at all of the information that is online, what they've been granted, is that for? And that's all that they are, that's the group information we've.
Is that, thank you, is that, I think, said for fifteen?
Yes.
Landing permission so far, that's been grown for thirteen stories. So the line names, it's on the other side, it's actually changed, which obviously had a big impact, etc. And these are, these are directly on the opposite corner, on my, and.
Is this on the other side, is that, this is an R, this is a diagonal? Yes.
So the opposite corner there.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, that the, so the taller building is, the taller building we're talking about, we're relating heights to, is directly to the east of our site. And the thirteen story building, you're talking about, is then directly to the north of that site. So there is a variation in heights.
So we just, don't just that building, there's more of mine, but there's actually some down.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a variation in height. What we've tried to do in terms of, from a design perspective, is related to, particularly related to the building that is directly opposite our site.
In relation to that, it was filmed on two stories. You also brought it behind that, considering you're on a different side of the road, and your impact is all completely different, how's it sell?
We think that variation and difference of composition is a good thing. And so, and I was saying, it's mainly about the four different buildings. And I think that the fact that if, if it is the case that one of the buildings, which is on our side, is like a tour, is also part of this composition. And if it would, and I'm not sure, I don't know. Should say that it's two stories lower, if it were two stories higher, it's still going to be two stories higher. And it's again part of the variation.
I actually think certainly not really is quite high, considering the travel site that you might probably be checking, there's a big improvement for fifteen, sixteen years. And as long as I remember, I was born in the area.
Thank you. Castle Reynolds?
I want to move back on two figures on the impact on the lessons at the major heritage sites. There's some reference in the reports to the potential visual effects on the lessons. Have you done visual maps on the map?
Yeah, yes, we have, yeah. So those are the, those are the verified views on the town spaces.
Okay, if you go to power of fourteen fifteen, talking about consultation in this site. It's certainly a nice isolation scheme, not just a drive home to the city in a sense. Do I take that to mean that that smooches isolation of fifteen stories and thirteen stories from the town blocks for which Bexley now concerns? So I'm a bit, I'm a bit worried about the content of that clause, because it seems to suggest that yours seems okay in isolation. But my honest question is, that if you wait along the side of the city for two hours for Bexley's thirteen stories, there must be a major impact pushing on the list.
You would see that, the, so the blue is obviously the Bexley, the preface of Bexley's scheme. If you read that, you'd see a small portion of the red, which was asking. So we have also prepared, you've shown that without the people who scheme in place. However, the initial response to this was, they took into account the likelihood that the people who scheme was coming forward, and not just the people who scheme, but the context of the Thames regeneration opportunity area will be changing over time, including what will be happening further beyond our site as well. And on that basis, their comments about the scheme weren't in relation to our scheme in particular, but were related to why the context of what's, what's happening now and in the future.
Castle Coates? Again, two questions again. The first is about the sale of the home for the buildings. What's, have you got plans for the making of this sale? Will they be available this season? Are you going to restrict to local residents first, or anything like that?
And confirmed with that, these are, these will be marketed by a large majority. So the intention is not that they will be sold by the citizens.
Can that be guaranteed or is that not possible? Is it possible to guarantee that?
In terms of planning, you can't guarantee that. There's no, there's no complete mechanism for that.
But that's your contention?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the other is about the affordable properties. I think it's not understanding that you think the affordable properties, the social rent points, will be in one block, whereas the sale properties will be in another block. Have you thought about the constraints instead? Is there a reason why you're not doing that?
We have investigated potential property. We've been speaking to a registered buyer who would be looking to take on the affordable housing scheme. And their view is from a management perspective and also from a service shop perspective. They would want the, the residents or the affordable housing to be, to be located in a single block for that reason and we work on a number of schemes. We work on a number of schemes across London and we find that quite a common thing. But not saying that we're trying to design a scheme to protect the right and for the housing access and community space as well.
Okay, I'm trying to stay advanced, I'll just go two more questions if that's okay. Councillor Callaghan?
Sure. Councillor, one more, we have to, sorry, we have to, just, let's, let's be, no, not this time. Just, just a quick question around the engagement. It's a twenty-three people turned up. And not very...
The key comments were, so we had six, six questionnaires back, six questionnaires back. The key comments related to the height of the proposal, sorry, I should start. People were supportive of the principle of the redevelopment of the site. There were comments about the height of the proposal. And there were, this was, we subsequently reduced the scheme, so this is before some, some design changes to the device. There were comments about the provision for affordable housing, whether that was a suspicion, but we're now, I think, thirty-five percent was part of the scheme. And there was another comment about the potential car parking provision on the site. And I think they were, they were probably the main comments in summary.
And, and since the change happened, come back consultation for within the linear of the...
Yeah, so once we changed the scheme, we forward submitted the application, we circulated the user's, to same, the same result.
Just happy to be able to get people to do on the new scheme?
Yes.
So how many are done there?
Okay, thank you. So before we go on to take the deliberations, I have studied the scheme quite extensively. And whilst I see the benefit, I do think that there are some question marks. And the height of the tower is one. So I just want to, I'm not moving any thing here, I'm just going to put it to the board that we could, before we take the deliberations, we do it before, we could move to defer on the site position or over to you. We can just move to take your opinions.
I'm positive you'll defer on that.
You would prefer that. Can I?
I'm, I'm not there yet. I, I think we have promised, I think we're having to make a decision. That's my, I think, couple more, slightly before, unless, unless the development would be the applicants. Making some, up with some changes, because I'd like to have an idea of some of the communities concerned.
Can I make one more for you before we, well, before we make a decision on whether we promote the site position? Still want to...
Chair, I agree with councillor Lough, I mean, we've heard about the secrets of...
So I'm, so to be clear with you all, my opinion is site position alone, yeah? Okay. So no, you're proposing site position, is that second you?
Second.
Okay. Focus on the, who's in favor of doing a site position? That's how I do my votes again, say that's how I do it. Okay.
The better than the start is that it will be difficult on your purpose. And one additional information, if you're visiting.
There will be only, I don't want to show that right now, but the height of the tower, I think, is one. I need to see a perspective to the house on the other side of the road. I'm worried that I'm, I don't think, I am sorry to hear that, basically, there are all the facilities, don't get this, several in front of site. I think some, I think some of the board have got some other issues, but for my part, it's the amount of town. Is that good enough?
Yeah, I'm very excited about it.
I'm doing that on my own.
Sure. Chair, I appreciate the note you wanted to, for the nice of town, but I think my, my issue is that we can't see the context that's being used as the justification for the house. The point is, those buildings are not there now. We are being asked to give approval on the basis of respect to develop even other ground. And I think if we were looking at this in isolation, as we should, in importance with our own planning policy, we would reject it. Because it's not in the area that is being appropriate for tall buildings. If we were looking at it in isolation in terms of our own planning policy, we would reject it. The only reason us have forward for considering it appropriate is on the basis of a decision about our planning, which needs to be in mind of the bar. Because I don't think that there is any subject that would give us any satisfaction.
Um, ask me to take a little break, this is just... I have a discussion there. But what I will say is, as far as I understand it, and I had to advise here from the system of our regulatory legality, we don't have to review the evidence, do we? When the, when the items are all back from the committee, do we need to, from objectors and the applicant all over again? We have to live in the moment, but I think that's, thank you. Thank you. Come on, we're going to next part of this, this conference, we're going to... Okay, are we completing the meeting, please? So, item six, one which we make away, thanks for you. So, the officer, Ian Smith, George, through your own, please.
Thank you, Chair. So item six, hundred and thirty-three people away. Our mission is for the end of use of private D eight to five human dialysis care, which is quite big one. An alteration is to establish on the side and has been advertised as a departure from the old development plan. Application site, identifying the way on the plan in front of Menders, is located to the northern side of Nathan Way. The industrial uses to east and west and are marked to north. The application has received one, which is addressed in section seven point five of the report and two letters of support. Application has been brought in by passengers inside the Boverland District. In terms of the application site, the application site forms part of the rest, it tends to be a non-strategic estate. The application site can be seen located here, with the landforms part of a wider area designated as strategic industrial land and set up in the London Plan, Councillor's Court Strategy and as identified on this part of the Councillor's Court Strategy Policy Plan. The area of strategic industrial land is identified in this application site. As noted in the officer's report and the first recommended reason for refusal, the proposed use would raise a month, industrial use to the designated strategic industrial location, while compromising the integrity and effectiveness of the industrial estate. It fails to comply with policy two point one seven of the London Plan, which states that development process within these areas should be refused unless in certain criteria, which are A, before within the broad industrial type activities, A one, which in the case of D one is not one of those. B, they are part of a strategic industrial process and strategic industrial plan solidated through an opportunity area of urban park. Due two thousand and seventeen year, this land report is... The land report noted the land release to have exceeded expectations and borders to retain their industrial land. Greenwich falls within this retained category. Part C of this policy, however, is for employment workplaces to meet identified needs for small and unique size enterprise or new but emerging industrial occupiers. And D, overall, is for small scale working facilities for industrial offers such as workplace crashes, canines. The proposed due system targeting patients within the white ten is being captured and not to provide immediate support to services to industrial occupiers named the sites. Councillor's policy EA of the Labour Strategy clearly identifies four areas that are also designated on the proposed map as strategic industrial land and unprotected continually industrial. First of these is identical, as what's ten is viewed, comes to the industrial area and including the white art plan, which the application form, forms a part of. Area four point two point fourteen, according to this policy, states that this area already operates as a successful industrial location and will be retained for industrial use. At this time, no... At this time, no information has been submitted to show otherwise. Court Strategy Policy EA says that this strategic industrial land are suitable for general industrial ware using waste management uses, supporting, supporting back set I rather than plan. As such, the work does not demonstrate some exceptional circumstances to allow for this non-industrial use and is considered to harm integrity and effectiveness of the area. So moving on to recommended, recommended reasons for refusal, two and three, which identified in the report. And this is just a bit more information in terms of site under the proposal. The area identified as site located here in Red, which is the protected industrial area. A bird's eye view, the site in the red again, where the site is identified by the TFL. And the P tower rating on public transport accessibility level of two, which is considered to be poor. Next couple of photos, photo view from the southern side of Nathan Way. As Menders will note, on the sign, it's the left-hand side. This is the, the application building as company's seeing, the works have already commenced on site. This is a view from the eastern end of Nathan Way and the site is indicated by the red dot in my hand here. Existing post-site plan, existing on the left, on the right. The proposal takes the internal conversion of the existing industrial units to bring twenty stations, stationary, reworked dialysis units, with parking to the east and ambulance drop-off area to the entrance to site, which we see here. The terminal alterations can be seen between the existing ground reversal path from screen now and the proposal. And there's several changes from the existing, which as could be seen from the photos are already taken place. So in terms of reason two, regards to the recommended, officers consider the proposal is magnified sufficient investigation or justification and suitability for this location to provide a high quality health facility by reason of its site in industrial location, with high levels of air pollution or public transport accessibility and location outside of a local town centre or non-strategic industrial location. Policy three point one seven of the London Plan acknowledges the need for improved health and social care facilities and those facilities included in those who play recreation and leisure facilities. Area of policy three point one seven says that development process which provide high quality health and social care facilities will be supported in areas of identified need, particularly in places easily accessible to public transport, cycling and walking. Councillor's Court Strategy Policy CH one, part A, states that the, the board developers are expected to support the development of new and improving unit facilities where there are identified needs and where the development is in line with robust strategy for provisional services. Facility must be accessible for all and be located in places here or on the edge of town centre, town or local centres unless it's a short need or a location that can be demonstrated. Policy CH two, the Court Strategy says that development are expected... Policy C H two, the Core Strategy says that development are expected to ensure health facilities are accessible. The applicant, the applicant has provided supporting documents demonstrating the need for free healthcare in the tenetary area. Officers have no objection to this, is made for the need for this facility in this area. The proposed use is considered to be appropriate to local needs. Surrounding locality is of a prevailing industrial character that is considered to produce a poor quality amenity environment that makes the site location or development inappropriate to support the vulnerable users for extended period of time. Due to the site's location and poor P tar rating, it is not easy to access or locate from the edge of the local centre. It is considered that the location and development is an established industrial state priced in for utility operations away from any existing residential accommodation and with poor access to public transport, not associated with a high quality facility. The appropriate locations have been noted as should include town or local centres such as tenetary town centre or town or local centre. This information was discussed from the applicant, been required thirty times ago since the investigations undertaken. However, in the sites tested, they were selected as an industrial location zone, including White Hart, Tri-Over, Oxford and this were industrial estates, all of which same restrictions as the current site. Still, inside search is considered inadequate, noting that vast reasons for private impact practicality of central town centre locations, no evidence provided demonstrating why site could be selected at the edge of town centre locations, in existing health facility locations or are non-strategic industrial locations. It is considered that proposal does not achieve this aim. Therefore, second reason for refusal, recommended. Reason three, recommended by officers, the location of the proposed sensitive use of industrial area would threaten viability of established otherwise desirable industrial activities. It's set out in terms of policies seven point five of the London Plan, which seeks not to impact upon those that are existing. Continuing viability of established otherwise desirable industrial activities can thus be threatened by this proposal. And finally, reason four, is considered that submitted flood risk assessment is insufficient and demonstrates that the design and defensive flood measures practices can ensure that vulnerable patients will remain safe. And it is in front of three, higher risk zone, benefits from the protection of the tenet type of flood will remain at residual risk of reaching. This submitted flood risk assessment has been reviewed by the Environment Agency. Environment Agency did comment on proposal as it did not comply with the department's set out in the N P F. On a further discussion between the applicant and Environment Agency, assess factually flood risk assessment has not been put forward. Therefore, the reason four, as we recommended by officers. So to conclude, whilst officers acknowledge the proposed need for such service, the reason set out in section one point one of the officer's report, it is considered that this proposal is unsuccessful. Members would quite consider officer's recommendation for refusal. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Council members.
Could we just go back to the overall site plan? What's the most important sign, another sign for the world back? Please. Because it's got all sorts of white areas, so it's not partly industrial, but industrial side of the site?
That's correct, that's, that's what most people approach.
That's about Chair.
Thanks Chair, thank you for your presentation. However, I can take you to section seven point three, and the table's there. So details of the presentation, the next box, somebody of comments. The next box, officers, comments. So environmental, you said that one from environmental agency that, you know, the object of it, transport to London, no comment, received. Crown to Beijing, no comment, received. NHS, no comment, received. C C G, no comment, received. Environmental Health, no objection. Public Health, sorry. Occupational Therapy, no objection. With Officer, no objection.
Pastor Pastor, can I stop you there? This is an opportunity to.
I don't want to ask a question. Is there another report that you receive that we don't have on this table? That's question number one. Again, when it comes to cost strategy, if it is pleasing, it's okay, it tends to. Waste, according to cost strategy, is okay, it tends to. This is going to benefit ethnic minority that lives within, which are going to better than is here with an act of limitation. Is there any information that you've received that is not on this table? Thank you.
In terms of comments, the section seven, that's what we received in the time of published in this report, I think members, that had a lot of information that's received since then.
Yes, can I just interject and say the comments were received after documents published? That's correct, isn't it? They are all dated, some of them are Friday, some of them last week, and even this week, one of them came in yesterday, is that right?
That's correct.
Pastor Pastor, however, you did not mention it in your presentation, did you?
That's correct.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. You set out a number of issues why we think we should get some of that from the state of the community, etc. Are you saying then in the industrial, industrial part and middle of office, as you said, is on, in terms of that part, would you say it would be objective?
Sorry, in terms of.
No, I'll say it again, if I didn't hear. Hanging application, I'm not sure what we said in your presentation. Some of them issues was around community sanctuary. Some of them were around the problems that happened, you know. My head is telling me, that's how I read the application, it was about being on the industrial side, that's how I read it. But even adding additional issues, and I'm just asking, are you saying that if it wasn't this application, that another application would be subjected to all the other issues that we have brought up about this particular application?
I understand.
You still don't understand?
No, I do, of course. Obviously, we have to consider the applications in front of us, nothing else can be performed. So consideration of policy, I would say, that wasn't for human dialysis centre. Do you want, and that's considered to be the outset workers of the actual strategic industrial land, as would any other use that would support the application?
My second question is, are you aware, always this is your assumption in application, that, that, that potential people living using the surface would have to walk there or in terms of transport to that new site? Is that a concern in terms of reason for asking to reject that?
One of the reasons is the cycle, cycle assessment, it's acknowledged that patients will come by car. But in terms of the policy that I showed, so it's accessibility which will be high, that's why I mentioned town centre locations for such use.
Just a couple of questions. It is accepted that majority of the patients will come by car. How does that, how, how is that not an acceptable reason? Comes up as a technical reason for refusal? Bear in mind that no one will be walking, so there was issues around walking issues of that, etc. How did that impact that the majority of people will be coming by car?
In terms of that, in relation to, in terms of reason two, which is a combination of factors, so it's the accessibility, as I say, we acknowledge that patients will come by car. But it's a combination of citing the industrial area, and the overall quality for those patients.
Thank you, you've got a question, of course, Council members.
I've got a couple of questions, I don't know if it's fascinating to be able to have the same way, so you can't deny it, of course. Regardless of these strategic industrial land, have there been an application, previous application, where they've granted permission to non-industrial use of industrial land? That's number one. In terms of, ten point two, in terms of the demand that the G L A has identified for the use of industrial land, what's the utilization of the industrial retained units within our region?
The first, first question in terms of the non-industrial land, I'm not aware of any applications within the vicinity of this site, where we want to give non-industrial uses within strategic industrial designation. And sorry, I'll answer you the second question.
The second question is, ten point two, it says the G L A industrial land is not on record. Said that London exceeded expectation and are ready for the continued retained category. I'm asking currently for the industrial, for the strategic industrial land, or for those sites where permission is announced, what's the utilization of those strategic industrial units? In other words, are various units empty in terms of occupying? So you, the report is saying that the use of this site is purely for industrial use, which I do understand, but I'm asking you in terms of usage and utilization of the site, for the, of the, of the business, that's the thing.
I have updates in front of me, I'm not aware of anything else.
What would be the typical situation is if you have certain strategic industrial land? I think if you go back to the paragraphs of the industrial land use, where we were originally identified London Plan as a managed release area, we have released a number of strategic industrial sites under the guidance of the G L A. And we're now being changed because we've released that certain site to retained, or we retain the industrial land, so we have sufficient amount of industrial land to make the naked ground for that, to address the naked for use sites. In terms of their consideration, we don't have time to deal with it. Thank you, Chair. Councilor Chair. If you want to conduct the talk to me. Sorry, I can't say that, I need, yes.
Thank you Chair. I just want to address one, some of the issues that were raised by planning. When you talk about in section two, the four public transport accessibility, the interesting thing is that's one of the main routes for people coming from tenetary to come for work outside of the area. So I don't know whether they're talking about poor accessibility. It is between four seven two and the two four four, those are the only two routes you use if you are coming from London. Secondly, the matter of, the integrity and effectiveness of the area. I think one of, Council Williams asked if all the units are used for business. If you took the time to go to that area Chair, you would find that there are quite a lot of churches in that area that are using some of the units there. There are quite a lot of other things that are going on but are not industrial use. So I think it's been an interesting exercise to actually go down there and have a look at the variety of things that are there. The suggestion of the flood risk, for me, it means that most of that, all of that area would be a flood risk in that case. And if it's a flood risk for one thing, then you know, you'd be arguing that it could be a flood risk for quite a lot of things. And the absence of tenetary is bound on that flood risk. So all of tenetary is a flood danger, I mean it was recycled and released, what's it, regained, sorry. I'd just like to say, when we talk about strategic industrial location, the question that was asked again by Council Williams, I think it's interesting, and it wasn't peculiar to tenetary, and it was that has there been a precedent in the borough where the strategic industrial land has been used for something else? So to confine that tenetary is confining that argument, I think. For, the London Plan does say that the third industrial location is suitable for general industrial warehouse, waste management, etc. When we talk about the integrity, it seems to me that a lot of these things undermine industrial business paths, which are particularly suitable, for example, for activities that use better quality surroundings, including research and development, etc. So the suggestion is that this area is an area that is being designated for poor quality, low, bad air quality, and so on and so forth. This project is, this development isn't going to exacerbate some of the more concerning areas that we've got in tenetary. But the London Transport, the London Plan, Chair also sets out in three one, that policies to support the delivery of the mayor's vision and objectives should particularly ensure that London is a city that meets the challenges of economic and population growth in ways such as ensuring a sustainable, good and improving quality of life and sufficient high quality homes, neighbourhoods, including inequalities in health and outcomes. It also says that these will be realised by ensuring London's people, London's people and communities have those opportunities, facilities, social infrastructure they need to support a good and improving quality of life. This chapter brings together politics to enable planning systems to help deliver equal lifestyles for all by reducing health inequalities, supporting social infrastructure, provisions on itself, and so on. So, the, it's clear from the letter submitted by the C C G, that there is a lot of issue with, issues within the, this local area. And it particularly impacts specifically on some groups, as Council, I was trying to lose, but it's a facility for all our residents, and I think that's the important thing. So I would urge the board to consider this application.
Sorry, Councilor, can I?
Thanks.
Can I ask a question first of all? Councilor Cowan, Councilor Cowan, can I ask you what you were reading from? Because the London Plan, because I understand that that was the definition of strategic industrial land.
No, 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 I'm just saying that because what we're quoting the London Plan, the London Plan also has, says that when we're looking at some of these provisions, we should look at things like health inequalities, etc.
Not in terms of the use of strategic industrial land, it's very clear about that.
But I'm saying that at the moment, there is, that area is not all just used for strategic business land.
Well, if it has churches, then that's something else we have to look at. But at the moment, it is very, very clearly defined, and it's clearly defined by the mayor. That it has, I'll just say it to the fact, I'm just, in terms of reviewing the policy. The policy is, is strategic industrial land, and ready to maintain that. So I just wanted to be clear that, I'm just, you, you were reading a different document?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Another question, Councilor Cowan. I understand that the applicants have carried out a patient survey, but I've seen that. Have you seen the patient survey?
No, I haven't, checked.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I thought you asked them all together. Are there any other questions, Councilor Cowan? Okay. Thank you. Is Hong Kong here? No, okay, uh, who are the doctors?
Good evening, all. Good evening, all. My name is Norman Douglas. I am in our inspection of three years. My current status inspection is at Dalrymple Staten, I believe, and this is at present in my caravan. I'm here today to support a planning adaptation for the area. When I learned that interpretation of planning provision was opposed, I was devastated and wondered concerningly how I could be of complimentary service to which I was later involved in choosing the car and requesting a complement that would make our stay more comfortable and convenient. I thought by a lot of my suggestions, inducing them to meticulous observation and planning, and my suggestions are as follows. I believe there is a substantial need for an additional kidney treatment facility in the community. This would ease the pressure of travelling long distance and travelling to receive vital, vital treatment. I strongly also believe this would support economic growth and benefit nurses who wants to work near a home. Visiting the premises, and I visited a day today, I draw the conclusion that this building would not negatively impact local amenities. The high design and the quality has no par, uh, sorry, apparent harmful effects on the area. This unit would ideally prevent patients from dying prematurely. It would reduce waiting time in space, thus helping patients to recover from ill health. You know, we're at that unit, we're at that unit three times a week, four hours a day. And when I went today, I was impressed with the ambience, the space really gave me, because it's like moving from a home to a home. It also ensures that patients have a proper.
Mr. Douglas, the two minutes is up, I'm going to run. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Oh.
Uh, I don't think we have questions. Uh, Councilor Williams.
Hi, good evening. Just wondering, as I don't see this patient, is there any, from what you've observed, is there any impact in terms of noise levels?
No, it was quite quiet, actually, very quiet.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Williams.
Hi, ma'am.
Hi.
Then, when you were consulted by the company for interior design ideas, did you not ask why they chose such an industrial site?
No, I didn't, because my concern, it's a building, all right, it was an industrial site, but it's a building to help patients, because in the end, they were hosts of about a hundred, seventy-five hundred patients, it's been under twenty-seven. So the industrial site didn't happen to me at all, and going there today is so quiet.
Do you want to ask a lot of the more private, the more the operating, the greater, that would be a better location? People could be.
Not really, because where it is, it's off, off the road. No, I didn't.
Okay. Ca, Councilor Douglas.
Hello, ma'am.
Hi, ma'am.
This is a, you may not get to answer this question, just we've not got the information about the patient base for the, for the uses, if you have any idea how many patients.
Right.
And whether to use it from Thamesmead or not.
Right. Well, the people, the patients from Thamesmead.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not too sure how many patients it is. I know upon consultation in that area, so I learned that it would deliver at least the fifty-sixth load of patients, right in later to seventy-two. A lot of people travel from far, like from Belvedere and far to come to Dalrymple Staten. Okay.
Councilor, um, just saying, you know, how, how do you like saying, how do you get, because it, 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 I was, how do you get, uh, one quarter, something, if one, this particular place has any particular challenge with it?
No, it's quicker for me to get there, especially if I'm here today. I drive, or my son or husband takes me. I've always tried for years, I've always seen and tried that. So it would be difficult for me to take a bus. Okay.
Thank you. Good job. So two minutes is good, Mr. John, thank you.
Thank you. My name is James John. I'm chair of the Kid, Kidney Patient Surveillance, and I'm also a diastasis patient. I have been so for eight years. The problem with having no kidneys or kidney function is you need somewhere safe to be and be treated. If we don't get our kidney dialysis within two weeks, we're dead. It's simple, it's plain, it's straightforward. We have to live with that. But in most units that I'm in here, it's pleasant to be there. We have somewhere safe where we can be and receive our treatment. It's boring to live. We lie on a couch for four hours. We've got two needles posted into our arms, and that kicks, look like a, what's called. This, I've seen the site myself, it looks like it. We've got an official site for the Kings, which is over at Grumley. And that's right up against the ice. It's an industrial building that's been reversed, which you can't hear outside what's going on the inside, and you can't hear inside what's going on outside. There's a night guard across the street, and those people there are on the twilight shift, aligned there, while the river comes out, jump up and down, trying to deal with it. But you can't hear it. You're safe, you're there, and you're out there. The lady at Thorby said most of it goes on with the dialysis. She said it's all better than I do. So I will thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just for clarity, did you say that a, there's a industrial, there's a unit or temporary unit in Grumley that's on industrial estate? Is that what it means?
It's an industrial building, that's being converted into a new pharmacy.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, Councilor Williams.
Just what, where exactly do you, how far away are you from it?
Well, I live in Iceland, which is without a problem, I'm outside Great Lakes. I've been to four hours, seven minutes, the King's College, Grumley. Mainly to talk to the patients about sort of things, as I try and do my better job of trying to keep there, well there, together, and that sort of thing. But I'm seeing most of them, and the only problem, I suppose, is they temporarily need to tell. But from what else I've seen, the whole thing is running here as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. John. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to move on. So we then go from the applicant, from the applicant's agents. Um, Paul Hartnett, from the, from the, is that, is that it? And Dr. Mike Alas, correct? So, ten minutes, thank you.
Thanks very much indeed. My name's Rob Ely. I'm clinical director for Real Services King's College Hospital. I'm a kidney doctor, and I lead a team from King's to provide the dialysis to patients across South East London. Firstly, to address this question of the suitability of recycled dialysis. Uh, being in this new unit, it is great. There is no question that it will provide a better environment for human dialysis treatment than any other facility that we have in our network at King's, and probably a better facility than most across London. It's spacious, comfortable, light, accessible. I have no concerns at all about suitability for patients to have dialysis treatment. I'd like also to be very clear that this dialysis unit will be providing treatment for NHS patients under the auspices of the NHS, and patients will be under the care of the King's College Hospital Greenfield team. We've asked Diavira, a private company, to provide service, but patients can't be observed by themselves. We've seen how Diavira provide dialysis for trusts across the country, including with Gars, Lowtham, and Forest Hill, and we've been very impressed. There've been a couple of questions already about the need. We've heard very eloquently from patients about why, if we don't have dialysis done, most patients need four hours, three times a week. We provide dialysis to six hundred patients. One hundred and twenty-one of our current human dialysis patients live in the Borough of Greenwich. But in total, we have sixty dialysis slots within the Borough of Greenwich, which are mostly given as a hospital village. There are an additional forty to fifty people just in the north of Westwick. The west of Gare, people are very close to the main ways, are more benefit from the facility as well. We strongly believe that everyone who can, and that's the majority of people, everyone who can have dialysis close to home should have the opportunity to do so. Why? First of all, don't underestimate the impact of travelling for an hour or more each way for a four-hour dialysis session itself, very draining. It takes people away from families and community apart from it exhausting, and it makes for a miserable experience. So the local provision is humane, are more humane. It's also not the kind of service that can be provided with GP surgery or, uh, if there is a degree of specialism to it, it means that we have to have a properly made facility. But if you can make that community that facility, it just means that people can live their lives. It's urgent. The requirement is urgent. We have, existing dialysis units are all full, and we have, I'm going to have to close our temporary facility dialysis month. Why here? I told you how many patients there are. We have mapped them all, and we can see that providing in this particular location is the best way of delivering dialysis, close to home, to the greatest number of people, and having the biggest impact. We've been searching for suitable sites for seven years. This is the only one that we found. We have looked at everything that's available. We're using industrial sites, we're the only ones on the list. So the only ones that came up. And it has also been thoroughly inspected by the Care Quality Commission independently, uh, who are happy for us to proceed subject to parental permission. And if we don't get permission for this facility, there's no immediate alternative. People will just have to travel. They won't be dialing on dialysis in as good a facility. So in summary, it's the right place clinically. It will provide high-quality care for local people who there's a huge unmet need, and it's been carefully planned with the patients there as over a long period. And I'm going to hand over to Mick Harwood, the doctor.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Councilors. I'd now like to directly address the suggested reasons for refusal of our set out in the office report, which we believe is application absolutely capable of being granted by the council this evening. As a member of Manfred Diavira, we operate nearly two thousand dialysis units across the country, and we currently care for approximately five thousand eight hundred patients in close partnership with the NHS. Firstly, I'd like to speak about the strategic industrial land designation, as it seems to us that this is the key boundary that the officers are suggesting for refusal. We do acknowledge that the site is designated as SIL, and we're not seeking to suggest that this designation development should be removed. We also recognise that the plan legislation does allow time conditions to be granted, even if there is conflict with the development plan, where there are material considerations. However, we now underestimize the importance of strategic plan policy, and we volunteer to this committee to create planning conditions to be attached to any physician to ensure that there's no danger of this having any precedent for the council. The first condition is for restricted permitted use to read the dialysis only, not general D1 use. The second condition is to live in the planning incentive for a ten-year period only. And the third is to ensure that when, should the patient is referred to industrial, uh, the patient is willing to revert to industrial use immediately when the use of dialysis unit ceases. So with these three conditions secured by the council, we can't see how this very specific reading dialysis use would compromise the integrity of the industrial area. Particularly if the industrial use of the site would be protected in the medium, long term, and in the meantime would create, after all, would create up to thirty-five new jobs. We can offer these conditions to officers, and we were quite disappointed not to see any reference to them in the officer's report. I'd also like to reassure you that this is very common for dialysis units to be located in industrial units, locations like this, for the very reasons that Rob was explaining. In fact, of the community-based dialysis units that Diavira operates, and same for other providers across the UK, in our case, all one of them are in industrial locations, where planning conditions are granted in a hundred percent of the time, even when there was a conflict with local industrial land policy. So we're really not asking you to go out and live here. This is a big common situation across the country. And we set out to examine the case studies and the impact of issues members, attendments. Just to answer quickly, I think I'm answering accurately, the question that was raised earlier, you're on about vacancy rates. At the time of the last year, the GLA reported June two thousand and seventeen, we read that the vacancy rate for SIL in Greenwich was seven point seven percent, which was the second highest vacancy rate in the, of the retained category boroughs in London. Second point I'd like to address is the statement in the office report that the use would threaten viability for start this industrial activities in the area. To be a little bit blunt about this, this just makes absolutely no sense whatsoever to us. I'd like to point out that you do not have a single objection, many businesses in the area at your consultation, and across the country, reading dialysis, you carry this personally happily with distances on occasions exactly like this. So if you really don't have any idea, just be patient about saying this, absolutely not our experience as an experienced dialysis marketer. Thirdly, I want to address the comment that we've not taken, undertaken sufficient investigation into alternative sites. This again is a strange comment for us to do, or strange to do for us to read, because we spent a full two years with our colleagues at King's looking for sites. Before we found this site, we provided documentary evidence, setting out the activity that we took with our commercial agents. With the site, we've been using over four hundred agents during that period, extensive site search activities being undertaken. It's simply a fact that none of the sites suits the site's label. And again, you don't really understand the confusion that's been made in this area. Fourthly, I'd like to address the problem is, we reject this preventive mission being given. Fourthly, I would request that we reject this, prevent permission being given. The building itself already exists, it has to be industrial use and it was a low risk of flooding due to the established fences of the common tenants. There was a safe level of flood risk within the large proportion of the patient patronage area. So refuse on these grounds, but actually prevent the delivery of any health affected whereas we need most, considering our patient's health. In addition to this, we would propose ensuring patients remain safe in the event of a flood by joining the environmental dialysis frontline initiative, a more overt, taking a more formal precautionary approach via our anti-defective operational procedure. So we give the flood risks as a perfectly manageable issue and indeed, it's a key contribution to assess the site patient, a family clearly suitable for dialysis use. Finally, I'd like to talk about quality. CQC inspectors are very thorough, they're very thorough registration, strict criteria satisfied, that includes the premises are suitable and appropriately located for their attending use. The fact that we've received CQC registration is subject to limited pattern consent, therefore reflects very well on the suitability of the application site. And with all due respect to you officers, we consider that the CQC, the King's and NHS Trust, the clinical commission in group, patients themselves and ourselves as a specialist dialysis provider are best placed to judge whether the application site is a suitable patient environment and we unanimously do. It's certainly not location, it's not a bit of a noise about the environmental issues, it's actually rather attractive, accessible patient environment. So I'd like to end by commenting on finally the review from the officer's report, which states that the pro development does not provide sufficient profit benefit.
Could you wind up that question?
To outweigh harm to the protection of teaching industrial land. This, in fact, would be your rather slight conclusion. We think it's hard to think where the facility has a greater profit benefit than this. Read about it.
Okay, thank you. Your way. Um, before I open it to the board to ask questions, can I just ask, um, a couple myself? One, and I'm just, actually, there was one objection, there is one objection, the neck of the cycle, so just to make that clear. Um, I have a map here as well, which is in the information of UVA, which is all the Royal Downs, the address is all of them. Um, you had said, again, I'll be, I'll just sort of clarify things, I'm not, you said there are one hundred and twenty-one in the borough of Greenwich, but there are one hundred and twenty-one in that. And I also understand that that also, all Royal Downs's patients can usually go to home.
So, so we, we have a couple of parts to that, um, question. So in terms of therapy, if you have, uh, if you need to have dialysis, there's hemodialysis in centres, there's home hemodialysis and there is peritoneal dialysis, which is a different way of doing dialysis. And we currently have roughly, uh, twenty per cent. Just get that right, one hundred and twenty, yeah, twenty per cent, one hundred and twenty patients who are at home for that dialysis and that's a combination, hundred of them have a peritoneal and twenty have a home dialysis. The six hundred patients I'm referring to are the people who have dialysis in centres with us. Um, and those one hundred and twenty-one I referred to are the one hundred and twenty-one people within the whole borough of Greenwich, I suspect, I think that map refers to, to the, the cluster around the area of this facility. Does it come, does it come with a whole? Okay. So, so the, the search as of last week of our, our, our present population of hemodialysis treatment was one hundred and twenty-one with sort of forty or fifty to the east of Greenwich and ten, twenty in the border.
It, it, I, I just want it to be clear, it doesn't, um, I have a couple, those are just one clarification and I wasn't making that the objection at all. Um, I have got a couple of questions that, um, I'll throw out to the board first of all.
Is Dalvera a nonprofit service provider?
I have a, we have a limited company. Um, so we've, I don't have any office issue with the company. The one, we, we're reaching one point is kidney dialysis. We've been providing, uh, dialysis services, working with health authorities and NHS trusts who we hail to around the world for around thirty years. Um, but we're a commercial organisation, um, who've, who've, one of the several commercial dialysis organisations who have to support NHS to provide dialysis services. It was very important to, to thank you, Tom. Now, so when we, if, when they trust us to us, we would like you to develop a service somewhere, in, in the location. Um, a guideline I give to my colleagues who are only experts in searching for properties is this is how many patients it's going to be, is it the patient map, the location? This is how, how the facility, how large the facility needs to be, because that's very strictly governed, there was a building guideline for satellite altitude there. And that's, that's the only guideline. So we don't restrict this to range of figures, if that's something, we don't, we don't bear any commercial restrictions at all. Um, we're not going to do that lightly, because there are, it's difficult to find a space which would actually work with a high functioning altitude. So it's all about getting the, a location which is the optimal location to minimize cost of patients. And there's a space that can be fitted to give a functional dialysis in that, for patients to be used.
And considering the importance that such an establishment, why are we ten years? Considering, well, we've got an expanding community here, it isn't, um, it is, it isn't important, considering, of one, you're going through all that trouble to develop this site, why living with service for ten years?
I mean, we are going to provide dialysis treatment and support. So just to make a point on the first question there, which is that we have the absolute top priority and wellbeing of our patients. So what we'll do is say, you know, what is the best, most efficient, most effective way we can deliver this? We tend, we go through a very river of technical process. Um, in terms of the EPR for the ten years, we will continue to provide dialysis indefinitely for our patients. If, if this is a, look like a suitable site in the long term, we would like to keep it. The reality is that, uh, you know, we need to replace what treatment plans after a certain period, dialysis populations can shift, some therapies can take over, it's difficult to predict absolutely what our requirement is going to be in ten years. I think we could say with some confidence that we will need advanced units to continue in this area after that point. Um, but I mean, you know, we are also, we have been looking for two years for the most suitable signs. Uh, and when ten years comes up, we can say at that point, what's the most appropriate way of, you know, for our patients?
Just a question.
My question is around safety. As soon as it grows pretty busy, the lorries will be shut. How do you ensure the safety of the patients, the staff and the speed in the industry now, which is pretty dangerous down around the corner and is always, lorries playing up now, how do you ensure this?
I mean, we, we obviously take the safety place to start very seriously. I mean fundamentally, we have a duty to help and deliver local healthcare to a local population on the best available site. Um, I don't, you know, you know the road much better than I do, I've been on the four seven two bus up and down, most patients we've ever waited will arrive by car, some by ambulance perhaps, some by bus. Um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the safety risks associated with arriving at that, that location, that city, to get there in the middle of our, our other dialysis units.
So, first of all, Councillor Roberts, Councillor Fox, Councillor Fox, just a few questions.
Hi, thank you. I know you mentioned that CQC is given, um, a world project, uh, something to pull on. Another very big progress in detail when they're doing checks, in terms of the air pollution and noise, are you able to share with us the feedback for CQC?
Yeah, the CQC, CQC, uh, there was a non-profit documentation that we sent to the CQC, um, before and then on the, on the inspection day, there were two inspectors that came along, an inspector plus his supervisor. And they spent five hours, approximately five hours on the site, uh, interviewing yourself, interviewing myself, with our architect and builder, and spent a lot of time inside the brewery, also outside the brewery as well, assessing the, the environment. Um, so they spent, they spent most of, most of the day there, in addition to the documentation that we sent in previously. Um, their conclusion, they, fortunately, they aren't to the intended purposes, so we're speaking about dialysis and dialysis patients in detail and the needs of the service. And their conclusion was that they would like to approve, uh, provide us a registration system to be good for that location. Their only issue is man consent and that's not because they've got particular concern about why man consent is in the event, it's because they wouldn't want us to start service and then be risked destroying the service because of important matters, as I was just saying. So that's, so it's that technical reason why they're not, well, just, uh, for not, for not registering to go ahead without, that, um, without man consent. So they're there for a long time, two colleagues, it's only one colleague, not experienced. Um, and we have partially contacted, as you contacted directly and showed you the response and how long the since the inspection as well.
Two questions. So the first question is, um, you're saying that there are many, um, with, can we, so that, is that a question?
Yeah. Yes, you've got to tell the agency to drop off a face round, round the city, describe that type of ground, or, or, in condition of search and confidence.
By face of the words, connects, why is that?
Yes, so, I mean, this is, this is, the position we wanted to be in, remember, normally here, um, so we, our issue here is that the temporary units in Dallas that King's managed is closing shortly and that date has always been set because of, uh, the reason why it's closing is because of another project regarding school etc. We've always had that in mind and our intention was always to do a flying seat, managing conditions before, before starting any works. Um, that hasn't been possible, recently, our education in November, so we would be hoping and expecting this might immediately happen much earlier in January, but for one reason or another, that hasn't, hasn't happened. And here we are, we took a measure risk on our side and that's our decision to go ahead in anticipation, of course, about, um, we're putting service and these patients before anything else, because we have this issue looming up very large on the horizon, which is a closure in Dallas, which puts the King's, it has to have a long strain. So because of that external factor, we've, we've taken the risk in the back and the decision to go ahead and make the investment. So it's not the position we wanted to be and it's not the position we're used, used to be, but we are, we are in that.
Councillor Fox, one last question.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify on the numbers again, perhaps it would be helpful to, it's a lot more impressive now, but she says there's a hundred and twenty old patients in the borough of Greenwich, um, although sixty are currently treated at Huey and who remain there need some radical treatments, presumably in the month I go to Greenwich.
So, um, there are one hundred and twenty-one patients in the borough of Greenwich, in fact, there's sixty slots that we had in our, feel as possible, would it, dialysis unit, I'm not taking that exclusively by the, because there are people just in the west who use that as a, anyone cannot be accommodated in their closest dialysis unit will have to turn to one of our incentives. So those, that, that group of patients you see on the map, that do have grouped around the, uh, the Tenth and the Eighth area, travel to, some, some may go to Dartford, or to Dartford Hospital, some will go to, uh, Greenwich, some will go to Sidman, some may go to Romney. So they, they have to travel a long way. And, and, and benefits of having proper local dialysis provision where it's most needed are number one, of course, a huge impact on people who live locally, because, you know, three times a week, four hours a day, you know, it's such a difference. A lot of these patients are dependent on hospital transport. And they'll tell me that they're getting up at six in the morning to get dressed, to get picked up, to take them by a hospital ambulance, round the houses and it will take them forever, you know, it takes them an hour to, to get something, then they're wasted really for the dialysis, so it could be a nine or ten hour day compared to just going around locally. But in terms of the impact on our overall capacity and knock-on effect is profound, because of course, you, if you put people local to where they need their dialysis, suddenly it's all those people who currently want to be in our Sidman unit, they can't be because there are people from this area, from that unit, they, everyone gets to travel to their closest unit and it's a real overall benefit.
I don't know if that can answer the question, just, just for me, it's about quality types actually, um, and so I've got two questions about that one is, um, when someone has grown up a few years ago, the intention was that quite a lot of these types of sorts of outpatient treatments wouldn't be transferred there. So has that been looked at, is that possible for dialysis for people?